We called the regular city commission and public hearing for Tuesday, September 12, 2017 to order, and we stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amy Lee, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Foreman?
Here.
Commissioner Fuzia?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Scott? Here. This is one of our annual things that we love the most, is the 2017 City of Pleasant Ridge Beautification Award.
Yay!
So, without further ado, Commissioner Foreman?
I'll be one moment to familiarize myself with the remote. Okay, it's working great.
Technology.
2017, and with another year comes another crop of wonderful homes for us to recognize tonight, and the homeowners that maintain those homes the way they do. Put these items down. First off, just a quick recap on the mission of this group. Well, it's basically to recognize neighbors whose homes enhance the beauty of our city. Very simple, although not quite so simple, to actually do the work and keep the home looking the way it does. So that's what we're here to recognize tonight. Also, just a quick recap to introduce, it's in darkness now, but, yes, if you don't mind, my fellow members of the beautification committee. Sean Daniels, who's standing back there. Kathy Gillis. Kathy Gillis up here. David Leylaw, I don't believe he's able to make it quite yet. We can clap for him when he gets here. Senator Keber, right here. Melinda Pipple?
She's at work.
Okay. We'll clap for her too, if she should come. And finally, Jan Troyer, right here. Special thanks to Jan's husband, Tom, who took the wonderful pictures for us for this presentation tonight, and those pictures will also be emailed to the recipients of the awards.
Yeah, Tom!
Just a quick recap here of what we do. Basically, we break the city into seven zones. There are seven numbers of the committee, so we randomly assign the zones each year. Each person picks some nominations that they would like to submit, and then the group meets a few times, we discuss those nominations, and narrow them down to, this year is going to be four winners. So we have four homes to recognize tonight. This will be led by Don, oops, I skipped ahead, sorry.
Give them their way.
I gave up the first one, but Don's going to discuss those for us, and then we'll wrap it up a little bit.
Yeah.
So we have some parting gifts that we will be handing out as well. No music though, sorry.
Good evening, and on behalf of this committee, I am delighted to present this year's beautification award recipients. I'm sorry?
Rotate a little bit so the camera can...
Take this one.
This is, take the whole one.
Don't be a photo shaker.
This?
Come on up!
Thank you.
28 Maywood.
That's okay. 28 Maywood. Tough room.
So, two stately lions flank the stone walkway and porch steps at 28 Maywood. The Café Olay exterior is accented with crisp white, emphasizing the architectural details. Well-groomed beds curve around the home's foundation and are filled with shaggy grasses, glossy hosta, flowering sedum, and a tidy boxwoods hedge. Brightly colored annuals and a striking fuchsia hydrangea add just the right pop of contrast, and a small tree brings the landscape into balance with the home. Special attention also is given to the side views with a hosta bed covering around on the left, and pecassandra lining the driveway on the right. This impeccably renovated home is the work of James Riggio and Curtis Edgar. 52 Fairwood is a real standout on the block. Topin' white defines its cottage-style charm, accented with a deep burgundy door featuring a unique personalized decoration. An inviting front porch patio is set with black iron table and two chairs, repeating the black iron of the stairwell. Elegant pots are filled overflowing with a variety of annuals, including the deep burgundy of sweet potato vine. Raised beds on either side of the porch are filled with mature hydrangeas on the right and a low boxwood hedge to the left that is fronted by an abundance of small pink roses. White double begonias surround a small Japanese maple in the lawn and repeat the accent colors. And a flower-filled side window completes the home of Allison LeVoy. This is Mrs. LeVoy, Allison's mom. Special thanks, actually, to Jan Troyer for this wonderful verbiage that I'm able to share this evening. 106 Cambridge. There's a casual elegance to the home of Mark and Lori Bollock at 106 Cambridge. Stonework pillars are topped with spectacularly planted pots. Approaching the porch, a garden bench sits to the left, and a boxwood-lined pebbled concrete path leads to the driveway on the right. Brown shutters and crisp white trim are the perfect complement to the taupe clapboard siding, softened by foundation plantings of creamy lime pom-pom hydrangeas. At the far left, a nicely trimmed tree is surrounded by sedum and connected to the porch, excuse me, by a line of shrub roses. A basket and crate arrangement on the porch and a flurry of flags add a touch of Americana to this Cape Cod-style home. And I might add, if you have the opportunity to sneak in their backyard, because it too is amazing. 106 Cambridge, Mark and Lori Bollock. So the talk of the neighborhood, imagine this, what is going on at number three Poplar Park? Everyone was talking about the transformation, every step of the way, as it played out on one of the most visible properties in Pleasant Ridge. Numerous conversations swept the community when the old plantings were ripped out, a new stone ledge and front path were installed, and the entire brick building was painted a glistening white. Interesting, yes. After months of diligent work, it all came together, starting with a creamy ivory top coat and dark-toned roof. A row of boxwoods and plumed grasses now outline the broad front patio. On the turf level, thoughtfully arranged plantings of varying textures include hosta, hydrangea, lambsier, feathery coriopsis anistobi, punctuated with touches of purple lavender and russet sage that echo the subtle shades of a nearby tricolor beach. Well-sized evergreens and purple-leaved hoycara define the woodward corner of the property. New homeowners Scott Lassley and Alex Guero tell us it's still a work in progress as they wait the arrival of custom replicas of Spanish Revival light fixtures to replace those currently on the facade. A unique bench that will be set left of the entrance, a large planter to go on the right, and more plantings along the drive and into the backyard. Nevertheless, the beautification committee felt this renovation already deserved its award, and it's a welcoming entrance into our community. Congratulations.
Now we have a special mention. The beautification committee, this isn't necessarily one of our included areas, part of our assigned duties, but we felt it was absolutely necessary to discuss it. So we couldn't let this one go by, this presentation this year, without mentioning it. Basically, it's the most significant beautification that really possibly this city has ever seen, and in such a short amount of time, it's made such a huge difference. So the reinvention and rehabilitation of Gainsborough Park has literally changed the landscape of Pleasant Ridge. A nice park has now become a spectacular recreational oasis, enjoyed by residents of all ages, levels of ability, energy, and interest. Tots jump and climb without fear of skinned knees, play hide-and-seek under the bridge, or scamper up to wave at the train engineer passing by. Older children spin on the giant ball, not spit, spin. I hope they don't spin. Climb a rock wall, kick a soccer ball, smack a baseball deep into the outfield, and the tennis and basketball courts are used more than ever. Gardeners have a sunny and attractive spot with accessible water, awesome, to grow juicy tomatoes, crisp cucumbers, and bushels of zucchini. Our neighborhood dogs have a safe place to run and play, and entire families, including the dogs, can enjoy a stroll along the meandering path throughout the park from end to end. For many, the conversation pit by the shelter has proven to be a great spot to sit, relax, maybe read a book, and even host a birthday party. Working on this project over its lifespan, it has become evident that it takes an entire community to create a truly incredible and inclusive park. First and foremost, we want to recognize the tireless contributions, insight, and enthusiasm of our Parks and Recreation Director, Scott Peterzak, who is not here tonight, City Commissioner Jim Brockman, our Assistant Recreation Director, Shawnee Stamper. With their guidance and personal input from countless residents who attended special community focus groups and commission meetings, we were able to capitalize on the expertise of the recreational design company Living Lab to customize a plan that met and even exceeded the expectations and collective desires of Pleasant Ridge residents. But it would have all been just a nice idea were it not for our residents endorsing and supporting the vision by approving a special millage for the parks, and also for the generous donations provided through the expert fundraising efforts of the Pleasant Ridge Foundation, as well as as well as many individual contributors. Furthermore, this group applauds the Pleasant Ridge City Commission for unwavering support of the process, often accompanied by lively or extremely lively discussions, debates, and compromise. Yes. It worked out very well in the end. To everyone involved in every big and small way, congratulations and thank you for creating the new and improved Gainsborough Park and for keeping the vision alive as we continue to make improvements there and at Four Ridge, our community center, to better meet the ever-evolving needs of our community. As you have seen, the work is already underway back there. Possible mention next year, so look for that. Next, just like to summarize the quick tokens of our appreciation, you'll see that tile, that's what it looks like this year. It's made by a potter in Royal Oak, who does a fantastic job. Each one is handmade each year. And again, we'll email the photo to each person who has had one taken to their home. So, everyone, if you wouldn't mind, one last time, put your hands together for...
Mr. Mayor, if I could add one quick thing?
Yeah. Nobody has left the room up? We almost had them.
On the subject of Gainsborough Park, the first event that we're having in the park since it's been redone is the hayride on October 22nd. It's going to start at 3:00. We're going to do a grand reopening, small ceremony event beforehand, and then the hayride will start at 3:30. So if you can make it out at 3:00, it'd be great. Looking forward to rechristmaining the park.
Will it be big scissors?
I think we may find something.
Big scissors! Excited. Well, that was fun. Thank you.
Thank you.
Beautiful.
Nice way to start. I think we should do that just about every other month. Next month, we get to celebrate our young baseball champions, so we always have good times. So, let's see, November, oh, it's election time, isn't it? All right, next item on the agenda is public discussion items not on the agenda. If you have something to bring forward, give us your address and...
I do.
Now... Lock that door!
You don't want to hear this, it'll rain on your face.
They almost ran over the new superintendent. Oh, god. Danya, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I've got everything set up. So, my name's Lauren Howard, and I live at 22 Oakland Park. I used to live at 53 Fairwood, and before that, my husband lived on Woodward Heights in an illegal apartment. I'm here because I listened with dismay to last month's meeting. Respectfully to you all, I do not find the presence of fecal matter and duck feces in the pool to be amusing. The Health Department inspected our pool, Pleasant Ridge Pool, the week of October 22nd, and they found us to be in violation of certain health rules. And the one that the inspector, they found us not to be in compliance. The one that she pointed out in her report was that we failed to keep our pool deck in a clean and sanitary condition. And she observed duck feces on the side of the pool. Now, I happened to be there that day. She inspected the pool during the time that the class I was taking was going on. And I must say, I saw more feces than she did, but she pointed out, the inspector pointed out, two areas where there was fecal matter on the side of the pool. I can tell you from taking a class on Tuesdays and Thursdays and sometimes Saturdays that I have observed duck feces in the pool and on the pool deck many times, and I have observed it in the same places on Thursday that I saw it on Tuesday. Now, after the Health Department lady inspector had left the pool deck that day, she was, I believe, inside the Four Ridge, there were pool staff who had come out, and they came out with bottles and brooms and various things that looked as if they'd been instructed to clean up the fecal matter. But to my observation, they had not been trained properly to do it, and in fact, when they were cleaning up the fecal matter, it was their way of doing it kind of pushed it back into the pool. Now, I did a little research on this, and it turns out that ducks, chicks, and reptiles are most likely to carry salmonella. And I looked up salmonella, and salmonella is a type of food poisoning that affects in particular young children and the elderly. We don't say elderly anymore. Apparently, it's older adults now, but speaking as one. What can I say? It also affects, can affect very negatively people with compromised immune systems. Now, I can't tell who has a compromised immune system from being at the pool, but I can tell we have a lot of very young children and older people at the pool. So those individuals can become seriously ill from this. It's not really a small matter, that if somebody gets this, it can be very serious for them. The Health Inspector directed in her report that the pool, the city, take measures to, quote, "remove and eliminate the ducks from the pool and the pool enclosure while meeting state and local wildlife laws." Now, from my observations, and I was at the pool, as I mentioned, two or three times a week from June till August, and I did not observe any measures being taken, and certainly none after the inspector was there in August. And I know from reading the mayor's post on Facebook that he was there on the last day, and the ducks were also. To say that nothing can be done about the ducks because of the Federal Migratory Bird Act is really not the case. First of all, the Federal Migratory Bird Act prevents us from killing the ducks, and as mad as I would get about this, this summer, I never once suggested killing the ducks, and I never heard anyone say we need to shoot the ducks. The Health Department, I don't see how they would tell us to remove and eliminate the ducks from the pool and the pool enclosure if it wasn't possible to be done. It doesn't make sense to me that they would say we need to remove the ducks from the pool enclosure if there was a federal law that prevented us from removing the ducks from the pool enclosure. When you go online, you see pools have had these problems, and that there are various ways that pools address it. I don't think that it was addressed. I think we sort of encouraged the ducks to be there, but I will just let that lie. Because the pool, the ducks were there from the time the pool opened to the time the pool closed, and I did not see any attempt to get rid of the ducks. But the reason I'm here is because, as I said, I watched last month's meeting that was streaming, and I was thinking that now that the pool is closed, it might be a good idea to take the winter to think about this and to accomplish not bringing in ducks next year, not encourage them to make a home in the pool, and that if the rec staff, if our staff can't do it, there are licensed professionals who can, and that the city should hire them. Because I see that the Oakland County Health Department has told us to do this, and we should be doing it. So that's all I have to say. If you have any questions about my statement, I'd be glad to answer them, otherwise, that's all.
I just wanted to say, up to the last part, I think that there is no doubt that everybody wants to make sure that there aren't ducks next year, if at all possible. I mean, that goes without saying.
Oh, good.
We don't advertise the ducks as one of the reasons you should come to Pleasant Ridge, because you can swim with ducks. But it is an issue of trying to catch them when they first, before they lay eggs, and trying to make sure that, this time, it was later in the year when they came, and it was later in the year when we filled the pool because of the surface, the Marsite had to be redone, the whole surface of the pool. And so everything got pushed back. But I know this was not something that Scott or anybody else took pleasure in, in having these ducks. So I think the question was, after they were there, the idea of removing them, and I don't know, you know, I know what was told to me, but I don't know what you learned and what possibilities there are. But certainly, we're going to try everything we can to make sure the ducks don't find their way to Pleasant Ridge next summer.
Do you have a copy of the inspection report, by any chance? Were you ever given that? Did that go to the... Do you have a copy, Jim? Did anybody give you?
I do.
Oh, okay, so you can provide it to the city commission. Anyway, thank you very much for listening to me.
What was the date of the inspection? I heard I called.
You know, no, I might have said, no, it was August. I'm sorry, I probably misspelled. The report is not dated, at least, I printed it off, and it said one of two pages, but the second page was blank, and it also, I think, cut off the date. But since I was there that day, I believe it was August 22nd, it was at least the week of August 22nd. I'm sorry if I said October.
No problem.
Please. Get old brain, oops. All right? Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren.
I'm Eric Zucker, 42 Kensington. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. As you probably already know, because I know I've been tossed emails back and forth with Kurt and Jim on what was going on with the AT&amp;T installing of the wiring. I've just got to say that the whole thing, I was quite disappointed, the way the city treated my household, my family, and the way they treated us residents. I can go on to the story if you want to. I came home to find that somebody had come into my backyard, left the gate unlocked. My next-door neighbors had an incident like this, their dog escaped and died running into the street. Find garbage in my front yard, garbage in my backyard. I found a wire the length, the width of my whole yard laying there, pieces of metal, and a burnt cigarette burnt into dry leaves in my backyard. I contacted the police. It took them probably about 45 minutes to get to my house, and the guy didn't knock on my door, the police officer, he walked into my house. And when I confronted him about why you're walking in my house, he says, "You called me, what do you want?" He was not very nice. And then he said, "They have the right to come into my backyard and do what they need." He says, "They have AT&amp;T." I said, "But that's not AT&amp;T. There is no labeling, there is no ID, there's nothing. You can't prove that's AT&amp;T." He didn't care, he was badgering me, and let me quote, as he's standing in my house, looking at me and my wife, he says, "Well, you people..." I don't know what "you people" really means. Is that a derogatory term? But he referred to my wife and I as "you people." And at that point, when I asked him to go in the backyard to inspect what damage was done or anything else is there, he refused. The police chief did come by on Saturday, because he was out of town for that week. I wouldn't say he formally apologized, but he backpedaled on some of the instances, told me that they were coming into the backyard, and again, they were there without any ID on their truck, without any ID that they're wearing. I had a wire in my backyard and all the trash and everything for three weeks. I contacted AT&amp;T, I filed a report, and I talked to Jim. I got a quicker response from AT&amp;T and the state of Michigan than I did from you, Jim. You never called me back. You never asked my phone number when I talked to you extensively. That was not right. That's all I can say. I can go on and on about this. They labeled themselves as utility. If they're actual utility, and there's a down wire, then it's an emergency. And if they're a utility, they should act like utility. They shouldn't trash and do all the other things they've done. Not only that, but the liability that you exposed my family and my household to, if somebody falls, they go to my insurance company, and you can't deny that. I've talked to the councilman at Oak Park, who's a lawyer. I've contacted an insurance company that deals with nonprofit and municipalities. I also contacted my PA, who is a private assessor. He deals with fighting insurance companies. And yes, if that person falls off the ladder, if that person catches everything on fire, the first person they come to is my insurance company. My insurance company then has to sue everybody else, and since we still don't know who these people are to this day, who are we going to sue? I know you guys couldn't get a hold of AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T gives you the runaround. I got my thing fixed in my house. You guys still haven't. What's going on? And you allowed, you forced the police to push me around and my family around to allow somebody that we don't know who they are, because they're still not AT&amp;T. They're a subcontractor, a subcontractor, we don't know how much liability insurance or anything else they have, to come into my backyard. Now, my next-door neighbors, they're standing on the garage doing a dance, putting up the wires. When I'm doing my jog, there are still wires down that are lengths from pole to pole over by the beautiful garden that you showed over there, and along the dirt, that stone trail there. I ran over 130 miles in the city in the last seven weeks, and they didn't trash any other street worse than they trashed Kensington. There was trash all over the place. And I don't want to go on and on, other than when you have a utility wire down and you cut somebody's utility down, I work for, I service HUD, I service the state of Michigan, I service Oakland County. And when you have a down wire like that, the place is deemed uninhabitable, okay? You can't charge rent when there's no utilities going to it. And they classify themselves as utility, they should act as utility. And when I call up the city, and when I call up the police, I expect them to represent me, and I don't expect them to represent AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T is a multi-billion-dollar company. We are not. We are the residents here, you're supposed to represent me. I remember a day living here, because I've lived here over a quarter of a century, and I grew up in walking distance of my house for all my, over half a century that I'm alive. And I remember the day that city, the Pleasant Ridge, fought cable because they said, "My cable or nobody else's cable." We said, "No, nobody tells us that." And we were one of the first municipalities to have competition with cable. I also remember them fighting for the freeway. Who did they fight there? It was a strong fight. "We're not going to fight anymore? We're just going to let a multi-billion-dollar company walk in our backyards, trash them? There's still wires hanging all over the place and everything? It's uncalled for." And it's embarrassing. I brag about our city. I brag about everybody in our city, and our council, I brag about our operations, I brag about everything, but I can't brag about this. And I've consulted other cities and other people, and it's just not right. It's not right. Also, I don't know, I sent you the email restating the 14th Amendment, "All persons born or naturalized in the United States and subject to jurisdiction therefore are citizens of the United States and the state wherein they reside. No state shall make or enforce any law which shall abridge the privileges or immunities of citizens of the United States, nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor deny to any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the laws." I can also quote you what law enforcement is, and it's supposed to protect the duties of police officers known as law enforcement, protecting people and property. They patrol areas that are signed. They're supposed to protect the public. They're not supposed to represent AT&amp;T. It just was wrong. It was wrong at all levels, and as I asked before, I hope you have a big umbrella on the city, because your insurance umbrella has to... If that caught them fire, the wire that was laying in my backyard was one foot away from a propane tank, are you ready for multi-multi-million dollars of lawsuits? It was wrong, and it was wrong for the city never to contact me about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, if I could just, Jim, as far as liabilities, Mr. Zucker just mentioned the liability to the city. Could you or Greg discuss as far as what is our liabilities as a municipality? That's a question for Greg. Greg, do you mind?
Hey, Greg.
Eric, how are you?
Doing great things, how are you? I thought that was you.
It was me. Mr. Zucker worked with his brother at a bagel shop in Waterford that I visited every morning for years.
15-year shop?
Yes. For years, so... The activities done by a utility or their subcontractors are done pursuant to an easement, either a written document or a prescribed easement. And Michigan law provides that once one utility... And Michigan law provides that once one utility has an easement, any of them can use it for that purpose. So, it's really not a matter of city law or city ordinance, you don't have anything that addresses that, because it's a matter of private property rights. You're given that, if there was some kind of a incident or some kind of damage, then, you know, the subcontractor would be responsible. AT&amp;T, as their principal, could be responsible. But the city, it's not an area that the city regulates, it's not an area that the city really can regulate, except perhaps in a limited way that I spoke with Jim about earlier today. So, there is really no liability to the city in that kind of case. So, you know, our insurance coverage really doesn't matter. No, I'm not minimizing what went on, it was obviously wrong. But there are limited things that the city can do. I understand that AT&amp;T was contacted, but the response was not very helpful with regard to that. Depending on the circumstances, there might be the opportunity to look into play to the state regulatory agencies, but there is really, unfortunately, not a lot the city can do. Now, do you want me to get into what we talked about, Jim, before? The issue really is, the one issue that I think the city can take some action on is people showing up without any kind of identification, without any kind of introduction. And I do think that's something that we might be able to address by adopting an ordinance that would require at least some kind of advance notice possibly, and certainly that anybody that is operating on behalf of a utility company or their subcontractor carry proper identification and be required to show it upon request of the resident. To have somebody show up, yeah, I wouldn't like it either. Somebody show up at my property and started tearing things up and leaving it in a trashed condition, that's, you know, that's awful business practice, and certainly is very disturbing as a homeowner, and I can certainly appreciate that. So, from the law enforcement end and making sure that people actually have authority to be on property, I think we can do something. And if that's the direction of the commission, working with Jim and the staff, we could bring something back for you, determine exactly what we can do and what we can't do, and then bring something back to you at the next meeting.
Mayor?
Yes?
Oh, I'm sorry. The state of Michigan doesn't require people in easements to wear identification?
You know, various utility companies do have requirements for their personnel, whether that's a matter of state regulation, or the utility practice, or how that's regulated, I can't tell you. I'd have to take a look at that.
Okay.
That's one of the things that we would look at.
Okay.
I know many utility companies do. I mean, they are in marked trucks, they have proper identification, may have uniforms, but my understanding is a lot of utility companies now are subcontracting this workout, and with a subcontractor, you don't really know what you'd get at that point. And that may be, I don't know what happened here, but that may be what happened.
Is it possible, Greg, is it possible that you can help the city adopt the proper protocol procedures going forward on this matter?
Yeah, that's, that's what I suggested.
Because we don't, we don't have anything formal.
If the commission, if the commission gives us the go-ahead, we would certainly be happy to work with Jim to do that.
I think we'd like to see that.
Anything?
Any motion for that?
Other business?
I'm interested.
Thank you, Greg.
Sorry? Next.
I am Craig Sias, I live at 39 Fairwood. I don't even know how to begin this. I've put together, I have an idea for a music festival in our parks. Gainsborough Park was, is the preferred location on the north end, just south of the pole building, at the DPW yard. It's a music festival featuring women, female fronted acts and singer-songwriters that my wife had put together years ago. We've been residents for quite some time, and we, we'd always been in a club to have the, the festival, and we always talked about wanting to eventually move it to Pleasant Ridge, to the park.
Would you like me to speak for a minute?
Yes.
Okay. The Motor City Songbirds would be seeing its fifth year. This is a mentoring festival that features incredible female talent from around the region. It also is a significant fundraiser for important groups that many of us in this room support, for Fern Care this year, as well as WDET. This festival is, there's already a lot of enthusiasm for this year's iteration, a lot of excitement. It will draw some vibrant, creative, multi-generational neighbors to the Pleasant Ridge area. I should introduce myself before I presume to speak to you, excuse me.
I was going to ask you, I knew who you are.
I'm so sorry. My name is Bridgette Deegan Kraus. I'm your neighbor, I live at 521 West Oak Ridge. I could throw a stone to Pleasant Ridge, but serve as a friend to Craig and am glad to be able to speak to you here tonight. But knowing too that this is, this is a festival that would honor a longtime resident of Pleasant Ridge, Julie Sias, who was a great lover of music and a great neighbor to so many of us, and a social worker to add to that, someone who brought community together in lots of different ways.
I don't know what else I need to say.
Yeah. I'm standing at Craig's side today. This is a gentleman bereaved, but also community that is also in the process of still saying goodbye and still with a broken heart saying goodbye to Julie. But this would be a wonderful way, and an evening that began with celebration, in terms of this meeting, a wonderful way to be able to bring this forward. I know one of the conversations that the, your leadership team needs to have is that we're fast-tracking this, this would be coming on very quickly. The thing I'd like to highlight is because it's a mentoring festival, there's a team of people behind this, this would come together well, it would be exceedingly well-run, and it's going to be a fairly high-profile event for this community. And it would be the beginning, perhaps, of future events as well. I know there's even talk of creating a scholarship out of this event at some point, and it'd be something that Pleasant Ridge could be tremendously proud of, should it come together.
Mayor, Chris, I thought I'd ask a question. Bridgette, thank you. Craig, thank you.
Sure.
I've heard about the festival over the years, Mary's been there, she said it's awesome, Julie put on a great show, she put this together, it's a wonderful event. My question is, when would you be thinking that this would want, when would you want this to happen?
I would like September 30th. It's only a few weeks away. I have everything put together, except for your approval. It's all ready to go. It can be self-contained if necessary.
I'm guessing we can't transact anything tonight, or we're going to have to ask Jim into questions, too.
But you did start to talk with Jim, and-
Yes, yes, I-
There's going to be-
There will be meetings.
More discussions, yeah.
Yes.
So, the discussion is being, and there is some hope, right? It's going to be tough. I know, no, I know. This is not something that's, that's easy to just snap your fingers and all of a sudden say, "Oh, it's good." I mean, we have to figure out, we have to check availability and just kind of get an idea of what the logistics and everything are, too. And I know that that will be-
Does it have to be September 30th? I mean, this is really late to be bringing this to us for the first time.
Right. Well, if, I'm kind of afraid if we go any later, weather won't cooperate.
Yeah.
And that's primarily-
From where I sit, more than willing to entertain something like this, but asking, coming here and asking us to, to entertain it in two weeks, is, I don't know. We've got a lot of questions we have to get answered, so-
I understand.
And our recreation director's out of town this week, so we're going to have to get to sit down early next week. If, I, I don't know. I mean, I think we're all, I don't want to speak for the commission, but, you know, certainly from a staff perspective, we're happy to try to make this work, but we've got, we've got some, I don't even know what the hurdles are at this point.
That was maybe my question, what are the known barriers at this point? Are there legal issues, or a dozen people, or-
Right, I have to look into, you know, does this require formal city commission action to allow for use of parks, so I don't even know what the questions are at this point. So, whatever you have prepared or ready in terms of your plan, you have the outline for the event, get that to me ASAP tonight.
Sure.
Send it to me. We'll see what we can do.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just, I would just add to, and I really appreciate Greg and Bridgette coming out tonight, and I know everybody in this, a lot of people in this room, you know, feel the pain that your family has gone through over the last year. I don't think there is a, a, an event that is more perfect to honor your wife than this event, something that she created, and the continuation of that would be a great honor for her legacy. And I know from my perspective, and same thing, I don't want to speak for anybody else, but I think between the city as an entity and the volunteers that loved and adored your wife, and your expertise and your ability to put something like this together, I, I would like to see this happen. I think having the conversation with Jim tonight is important, is vital, but, and I would just put the call out, that's why I wanted to speak to it, if there are things that need to be done in the city on a volunteer basis to prep or do whatever, to staff or to work, I would like Jim and staff to know that I'm fully confident that if you ask 100 people tomorrow to come out and make this happen, they would make this happen. So, I understand logistical difficulties of this, but I would just like to say that I think it is possible, and I, I personally would love to see this happen. So, yeah, I know, it's a bad week, Scott being out of town. Wait till you get to Recreation, my liaison report. It's difficult with Scott not being here to do the liaison report. It would be impossible for Scott not to be here and pull something like this off. However, Jim is incredibly adept at his job, and Shawnee, you know, she's a rock star too. So, I just think the stars are aligned to make this happen, and I would just really hope that with a lot of hard work and, you know, the contributions that you're obviously willing to make, that we can make this happen. So, thank you for coming out tonight, and hopefully we'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you.
Are there any other?
I have a quick one. I'll be quick. Hi, I'm Amanda Wall from Three Oxford. I just wanted to talk about, last time we talked about the foundation putting together an event in October, we have nailed that down. It's going to be Wednesday, October 18th, at 7:00 for about an hour and a half. Is something wrong with that date?
No, no.
Oh, gosh. Did I miss a game or something? Like, we always try to like pick something that people can show up for. Basically, the format's going to be telling people what the foundation is about. And another thing we're going to do that I'm excited about is get people's, get people's feedback about what they'd like to see the foundation do, maybe some projects that are near and dear to people that they would like to see the funding go for. And we would like people to, you know, and we're going to have like little break-off groups about the different opportunities to volunteer in different areas for the foundation, and try to put people in with that and answer questions, and also have a fun. There'll be some hors d'oeuvres and some potential adult beverages.
Where's it going to be?
It's going to be, I'm so glad you brought that up. It's going to be at the rec, at the rec center, and we're going to be having it at the new, the new area that we're doing right now, the whole back area. So, we're going to showcase our latest project, which is why we chose to have it, it's no accident. So, it should be probably about 75% done, so you can see where our money has gone from the auction this year and all the great things it does, and you know, how, of course, you talked about Gainsborough Park, how we kick-started Gainsborough Park with the toddler area, we paid for that. So, we just want to come and, and we want you to come and have a good time and learn more and get involved, and, you know, it'll be a good, a good situation for everybody, hopefully.
I think I missed it. What time did you say it started?
7:00.
Seven.
Yep, 7:00.
If you did it at 5:00 in the morning, you could use some fobs and talk about how you-
Right, you could, like, you could watch me do it and then pretend to work out. Does anybody else have any questions? We're very excited, so-
That's a great idea, I'm glad.
Good, yeah, we want-
Glad to see the foundation.
Yeah, we want people, we want to educate people, but we also want people's feedback, and I think the more people know, the better off everybody is.
Get people engaged.
How are you going to get the word out about it?
Okay, so, we are going to be sending out a mailer, we're going to be posting on Facebook probably tomorrow. So, this is our, like, this is the, the crack-open, you know, situation tonight, yes. What was that?
The ridger.
Oh, the ridger, of course. Where would we be without the ridger?
There you go.
Yes.
It should be out just in time.
Yes.
So, October 18th, okay.
Yep, a Wednesday.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you for your time.
I know. It's going to be a busy fall.
It is.
Um, are there any, anyone else for public discussions?
One, one thing I'd like to add, on the, a final kind of coda on the AT&amp;T thing.
Yes.
We did contact the state regulatory agency, and the comment was about how Pleasant Ridge used to do things with the cable, where we used to have more ability to until the state rewrote all the laws and took all the cable regulatory powers away from us. So, now we have to work through the state. So, I don't want there to be a sense necessarily of my agreement with those comments, or that from the city's standpoint that we find them to be completely accurate. I'm not going to argue here, but we did contact the state, we did file a complaint with the state. I talked extensively with probably three different departments at the state about this, and, you know, in terms of the, the contractors making a mess on the property, yes, that's a problem. But it's not something that the city, we, we could, we can't even really file a complaint on behalf of residents, they have to contact the state. The state wouldn't take our complaints about that, even though we tried to facilitate it. So, every resident has to contact the state, and AT&amp;T will then address it.
There's the Public Service Commission.
The Public Service Commission, and actually, we ended up with the Department of Energy, because that's where telecommunications is housed. So, there's, there's utilities, there's MPSC for Public Service Commission, and then there's energy. Energy handles telecommunications, cable is handled through MPSC. So, we ended up with energy, got a better response, and-
Inflicted.
Something there, so.
So, the public service is totally-
We're never going to resolve this, I think, with this resident to satisfaction, but we have been working on this, and Greg and I have been talking about it, so that's all I wanted to add on that.
That's great. And if we look toward an ordinance, maybe that could help us a little bit next time, I guess, what we do.
You know, we've never run in, we haven't run into a situation where, and talking to AT&amp;T, they're, all of their contractors are supposed to provide notification and identification people, and we learned that through this process. One of their contractors did do that. They had other subcontractors working for them, we did not. So, we've learned that. And so, that, you know, we've had other utilities, obviously, work in the backyard in the easements, they have to maintain it, and we've, we have never had a problem like this with any of those contractors. So, you know, we've learned some things, and Greg and I have been talking about how to address this going forward, because, you know, we don't like unidentified people going in our residents' backyards either. So, we're going to see what we can do on that end of it, so that at least they provide notice, provide proper notice identification always.
Well, one of our, just, just for information, one of our residents who worked, one of our neighbors who worked for AT&amp;T for 40 years, said he spoke to the guys that were working, and they were even working on the weekends, but they were working free because they were so far behind, and they were being paid minimum wage with very little of any training from-
Right.
And so, this is, unfortunately, this is how the subcontractors and subcontractors do it. And obviously, AT&amp;T doesn't, doesn't seem to care about who their subcontractors are working with.
That's correct. And so, because, because they're conducting their, their business poorly, the chief and I have talked about this, and if any other residents have this issue, if you have this issue going forward, the police are going to throw them off the property now at this point, until they provide notification.
Certainly, identification.
Identification, notification, yes, exactly. If they don't have that, if they can't prove that they've provided that kind of notification, we're going to throw them out now, until they do. Because, you know, AT&amp;T's not really willing to work with us on this.
Right.
So, we'll use, we'll use whatever leverage we have to do what we can on this, to at least try to get them to go about their business. Talking to AT&amp;T, I don't know if I just mentioned this or not, but their, their agreement with their subcontractors is that they do notify and identify. I think we're doing that.
That's-
Jim, it sounds like this is a pretty widespread effort, not just limited to a few houses in town?
Right, and again, because, as Greg mentioned, it, because it's a private easement, and the city isn't involved in that process, we don't know. the city isn't involved in that process, we don't know. They didn't, they never contacted us, they never informed us beforehand, we just started getting calls one day. And that was the first time we found out about it, because nothing was ever contacted us. So, I don't know the extent of where they're working, I know the mayor's informed me they're down in Ferndale now, and it worked most of the east side. There haven't been any west side calls yet, so I don't know if it's coming on this side of town, but, I don't know.
Mr. Zucker was probably not the only call that you received about the mess or such?
It was not.
Well, we learned from these things, so. All right, no other items, so let's move on to the next item. It's governmental reports. I think we have Chief of Police, and that's probably it.
I too will start with the AT&amp;T thing. I just have a few things. Like the city man, excuse my voice, it's going today. Like the city manager stated, we started receiving calls when the work started being done, and it was wide scale, it was the entire east side. I myself went to 10 or 15 calls about people, them working in the yards, breaking off branches rather than cutting them, dropping them down, and the people were concerned about their flowers and things like that. When I went out and spoke with that group, they promised, and I went back and followed up, and it was on Fairwood, one of your neighbors, I believe, and they cleaned up. Spoke with them, they were polite, the residents said they, they were polite, it was just, she was just concerned about how they were going about their business. There were different vendors working in town. One of the companies, prior to starting work, hung door hangers on people's doors, advising them that they're going to be there, if they had dogs, lock them up, put them away, or do whatever. Did we get complaints about gates being left open? Yes. Not everybody was astir. But I don't think it was the company that we received a copy of the flyer from and a phone number for a manager who answered the phone and was concerned about what they were doing, and promised that he would let all his employees know about the behavior and the type of work that we expect. Now, there were other vendors. I went to the call, I believe, Mr. Zucker, you're the one that called about the guy in the garage, your neighbor's garage?
Uh, no, I didn't call them. That neighbor called themselves.
But when, when I got there, there was nobody on the garage, and they were putting stuff away and cleaning up in the yard. I didn't observe any damage to the garage or anything, and the person that called didn't stay for us to talk with. As far as the officer that came to your house, I was out of town, but he called me right after he left your house and explained to me a little different version of the events. He said he had called there, he had to come from an accident because there was a guy on vacation, he was the only officer on that night at that particular time, and it took him, it did take him a while, I don't know if it was 45 minutes, I'd have to look, I'll, I'll believe what you say. But he said he knocked and, and said police, whatever, nobody answered. Well, I'm just saying what he.
I was two feet away.
What he told me.
He said the doorbell didn't ring, so he just walked in.
So, he said that he did enter and then have a conversation with you. If nobody answered, now, if nobody, if we get called to a house and we don't know the nature of it, we have to investigate, make sure there's no wrongdoing or whatever, too. I'm not saying that this was the case, or what he did in this instance was right, but he's experienced veteran officer, and the city manager and I will vouch that none of our officers would most likely talk or act like that. And if they did, then I will have a conversation with him, okay? And I don't know if somebody's impersonating the chief of police, because you said that I went out and I talked to you. I never came out.
Okay, I moved to another officer on Saturday about 4:30. So, it's a senior officer.
Because I was out of town. So, I just wanted to clear up, I didn't talk to you. And then I didn't receive any phone call from you to address this, and if you want to come and talk to me, then we'll happily meet with you and we'll discuss it, okay?
Because you're, the officer lied, I mean, I got witnesses to what he said and what he didn't say.
All right. I'm just saying how it was related to me on the phone.
Yeah, it wasn't, no, I didn't talk to you then, because I'm like, you're not the chief, and I know there's a new chief, so I'm aware of the new sheriff of town.
And that, that's all I had to say about that. I really didn't have anything else until this morning, when we came in and it, you saw on Facebook, I saw a little bit, that we had a series of larceny from vehicles where windows were broken. Actually, we had 11 of them. And these weren't cars parked on the street. I know I always say, set your alarm and lock your doors, that might be bad advice, because if they can open the door and get in, then they wouldn't break your window, but today they broke a bunch of windows. They used some sort of center punch device to break anything, but the odd thing was, a lot of them, nothing was taken, nothing. Where there were valuables and change and money and prescription drugs inside, nothing was taken. I don't know if they got scared off or whatever, but there were items stolen or whatever. We, I had officers on foot, I saw that they said, thought the state police were out there. It wasn't, it was two other Pleasant Ridge officers that went, walked on foot on every block on the west side, looking for more damage, checking for security cameras or ring or nest doorbells, so we could obtain some video maybe, and, because right now we don't have any suspects, no good fingerprint evidence, nothing like that. So, if you see something suspicious, call. Nobody, some of the cars, I went out, I rode some of them this morning, were parked right next to motion lights, no car alarms went off. The officers that worked midnights last night are here again tonight, and they said it was quiet throughout, no other cities got hit, there were no car alarms, there were anything. I checked the mileage, they were out driving around, so, because we do that. We make sure they're out driving around every night. So, lock your cars, more motion lights, we got to try to make it hard for them to deter the criminal activity, but we did have 11 where most of the windows got broken out, some, a couple of windows got broken out, some items are stolen, but like I said, not a lot. So, if anybody has video that they're able to share and give to us, we'd be more than happy to take it, so we could try to clear it up.
The video you're looking for is Oxford and Hanover?
There is Norwich, Hanover, the entire block, Oxford, obviously from Woodward to, to Ridge, and Cambridge there.
That sounds like something.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Finally, we're going to get to it. We promised after all this time. All right. The next item on the agenda is city commission liaison reports, and we'll start with Commissioner Foreman and Ferndale Public Schools.
Yes, and here this evening, we have Donnie Bazi, our new superintendent, and she's with us tonight to tell us a little bit about what's going on in Ferndale Schools, after she kind of introduces herself to the community a bit. This will be the first time I've met her.
Thank you.
So, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
A breath of fresh air.
Who doesn't like to clap? Thank you. Thank you very much for the, for the very warm welcome. I appreciate it very much. Just if I may approach you, just going to hand out, there's three for that one. Just a little bit of, of an update. First, Mayor Metzger, members of the commission, city manager, city clerk, and members of the community, thank you for having me out this evening. I am the new superintendent of Ferndale Public Schools. I started on July 1st. My educational journey started on the east side of the state. I went to Wayne Memorial High School, and then went to U of M Dearborn, and then did my doctoral studies at Wade State University. I started to move to the west side as my career progressed. Most recently, I was the superintendent of Galesburg Augusta Community Schools, a rural town right in between Battle Creek and Kalamazoo. I'm used to serving very unique and diverse communities that face challenges that, that many school districts face, but in each of my experiences, we've, we've been able to overcome those challenges and provide the very best for our students, something I'm very proud of. I come from a family of educators, many of my, my family are teachers. My sister went from being a teacher to a lawyer, I don't know why, she made that jump, but, you know, I guess as long as everyone finds their own educational journey, I suppose, is, is the important thing. One thing that I'm telling you is I'm, I'm committed to all kids and providing them, like I said, with a personal experience with an exceptional result. At Galesburg Augusta, one of the things I prided myself is I knew the kids one-on-one. I often mentored those who were struggling to be able to help them through their educational journey. I will tell you, the, the key to my happiness, the key to my success, has been my education, and so I will continue to be an advocate for public education and for the citizens that I serve in Pleasant Ridge, as well as the other areas that we serve within Ferndale Public Schools. I have an open-door policy for, for anybody, and welcome you to, to be a part of the school district in any way that you can. I believe that a strong school helps to aid for a strong community. I'm very happy to be a part of the school district and very excited about the future and hope to be here for a very long time to come. Just, I gave you a little bit of an update of kind of our first couple of weeks of school. We've really had a great, great start to our school year. We have a new high school principal, Lisa Williams, who, who had served as the principal and is now back, and we're very excited about that. One thing that we are doing this year is every week, we have a quote for our students and our staff, and, and our first quote for this year was "Make Your Mark." And so, each of us have the responsibility, every student, every staff member, of how we're going to make our mark on the school community and the broader community. This week, we, our quote is, "You have brains in your head, you have feet in your shoes, you can steer yourself in any direction you choose." So, that's, that's Dr. Seuss. I'm very excited about the facilities improvement, again, our, our, including Pleasant Ridge, passed a sinking fund bond not too long ago, and so you're going to start to see major renovations as we go through this summer. There was a lot of renovations to, to the buildings and infrastructure. We also have an energy bond that basically changes all 7,000 of our lighting fixtures to LED to make us a more efficient and green school community. I invite you all to be a part of our homecoming on October 6th. There's a parade in Tailgate at Ferndale High School. I'd love to see some of you out there. Also, we have various curriculum nights, we have an active Facebook page that I, that I invite you to like, to keep abreast of, of what's going on in the school community. But I want to stress again the fact that I'm here to work with you and to do my best to assist the local government in, in any way I can, and to establish a very strong partnership between the school administration and the city. So, again, thank you for your time, and I wish you a good evening.
See, the trick will be if we clap for you the second time you come.
A lot harder.
Did anybody have any questions, comments? Thanks for coming.
We really welcome you and hope, hope you do stay for a while.
Yes, I'd, I'd like every couple of months to be able to kind of tell you where we're at and just give you a quick update.
We would love that.
Sounds great.
Thanks for doing it. Thank you, I appreciate, appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a chair.
Is that it?
That's it.
You're it? That's it? Easy.
Commissioner Perry, Planning, DDA.
Thank you, Mayor. The Planning Commission and DDA did not meet last month, but our next meeting is October 23rd. They are also talking about trying to have a gathering of the DDA for the holidays, just to sort of keep building community within that group along, in the DDA, to help them realize that they have like their own community and everything, to help just talk about issues and ideas and everything from, you know, planters in the summer to holiday lights around the holidays. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Scott, Historical Commission.
Just a couple of quick notes. The museum will be open this weekend from 10 to noon, so please stop by and see some of the artifacts from the city, and if you've never looked at your file before, it might be interesting to see interesting details about your house. And in fact, the Historical Commission would like you to put things in the file, so if you've taken a photo of your house or something, bring it over, put it in, just so that 50 years from now, the next, you know, person can have something to look at. And then our next meeting is on October 6th.
I just wanted to ask, John, do you have any more lectures coming up?
No.
No?
That was a good one.
Can we give you suggestions?
We have some.
Oh, okay.
Always has got a big list.
Anxious to hear you're thinking. You have a big list. I'm sure you are. I like the way you said, "I'm always anxious." All right, you got it. All right. Commissioner Krizniak, Recreation Commission.
Thank you, Mayor. We've touched on some of the items. Amanda mentioned the improvements there going on at Fort Ridge, really excited about that. Jim had mentioned the opening for Gainesboro Park to coincide with the hayride. That's coming up, always a highlight of the year. Pool closed, we've touched on some pool issues, I know that'll be a discussion at our next meeting, for sure, and so I have.
Any comments, questions? All right, thank you. We'll move on. Item eight, consideration of the following consent agenda. Six items on the consent agenda. I'm looking for approval of the consent.
Mayor, I would just ask that item 8E be removed for questioning to the end of, to the last item of business?
Okay, so, remove 8E to item 11, we'll make it 11A just before the city manager's report.
Okay.
It's okay?
It's cool. I'd make a motion that we move Agenda Item 8E to Agenda Item 11A.
Okay.
So, we need to, uh-huh? Motion for the consent agenda with the removal of that? Is that what we're looking for? Yeah, that's right.
Would be approving the consent agenda.
With five items, right, so.
Yes.
I'm good with that?
I'm good with that, thank you. I'll second that.
Okay. Can we take a vote?
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes. Mayor Metzger?
Yes, the consent agenda with that minor change is approved. Okay, moving on to the next. Ordinance regarding DAS, small cell wireless facilities in public right-of-way. We have a public hearing, but like, Jim, just to give us a few words.
Speaking of utilities, one of the things that we still can regulate for now are telecommunications, wireless telecommunications facilities. And the latest trend, as all the networks are trying to continue to build out, and as we do more and more on our phones and eat up more and more bandwidth, they're trying to fill in gaps and increase capacity. And in, in areas like Pleasant Ridge and even just kind of southeastern Oakland County in general, it's hard to locate a 150-foot-tall monopole tower, which is traditionally how they provided cell signals. So, one of the things that the networks are moving to are what they call distributed antenna systems, or small cell facilities. And these are small antennas that can co-locate on existing structures like light poles, and by putting more small antenna, they can provide additional coverage. We were approached by a couple of these companies who wanted to co-locate here in Pleasant Ridge on some of our streetlights specifically. We told them, "We don't have anything to regulate this, so we're going to hold off on your application until we bring this question forward." The ordinance before you sets up how we would prove these and what our expectations are for these types of facilities. And the, the high points are that, first, they have to co-locate if they can, and they have to prove that it's impossible to co-locate on an existing structure or facility. If they can prove that it's impossible, that they have to put in a new tower, then we can consider that, but it can't be any more than 35 feet tall. The one change from when we introduced this last month is that we added in a notification requirement. We follow the notification standards that are in the zoning ordinance, which is set up by the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. Anyone who lives within 300 feet of a proposed facility would get mailed notice, and there would be a public hearing, and that notice would come at least 15 days before the public hearing. So, that is the broad stroke summary of the ordinance. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, and either I or Greg can clarify anything in the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So, the notification requirement that was added, is that the, the bottom where it mentions Section 82-46?
Yes.
Okay. The other thing I would mention is that we talked last month about the different spellings of co-location. I noticed there's still a couple of different spellings in there. Co hyphen location, then co-location one word, so we just go through that. And then finally, my question is just, what's the risk of our doing nothing with this? Because it's not allowed today, and we're not necessarily saying that we want to allow it, and the commission can deny it without any reason each time. So, it's, it seems like you feel maybe, Greg, that we should do this just because things are moving in a certain direction, and this would prepare us for something, so what are the risks of doing nothing?
The risk of doing nothing is that if you have nothing in place, and someone can always challenge you on the basis that you have nothing in place. challenge you on the basis that you have nothing in place, and that's an exclusionary zoning kind of argument in the zoning context. And I think it is safer to have something in place. This also sets forth a procedure which we don't have now. And finally, you know, if you decide to allow one of these, it is a service for your residents because it fills in gaps for them. This is not going to be probably anything that would cover the heavily trafficked roads like Woodward or 696, but it's more to, in many cases, usually used to enhance service in residential districts.
Okay. Thank you. So, Jim, I had asked a couple residents and some people I work with about this, and they were saying, "One of the benefits that we have delivering in this area is that we are pretty well covered with cellular coverage and whatever, whatever the coverage is called." Is it cellular coverage or what's it called? Yeah, whatever that is. So, you know, and they were saying, "One of the problems that they have been reading that," and I think this ordinance tries to address it, is that they, they'll make promises of like, "Oh, these are going to be really, you know, an elegant, attractive solution," and that they aren't, that isn't what they've been delivering. And once they get up, it's really hard to get the stuff down and to back off of that stuff. So, I guess that's what I want to see this ordinance help address, because I do believe what you, Greg is saying is that, you know, the FCC is going to help open up some of this, and so some of this, if we're not prepared, will just happen to us. It's kind of what I want that to be. So, were you hearing any of this stuff, though, about it being poles and whatever that are not attractive and not, and that they can keep adding things to these poles once they put them up, too?
From dealing with wireless carriers over the years.
Yes.
Overpromising underdeliverers.
But to answer Ann's question, the ordinance does say that they have to blend into the natural environment as much as they can, and you can also condition your approval.
Okay, exactly.
You know, if you saw a plan and you think it needs to be modified to do exactly that, you have the right to do that.
Okay.
And again, it's entirely discretionary at this time for you to allow it or not allow it. That may change, as Jim said, these laws constantly evolving, but right now, this would give you the ability to regulate those aesthetic features.
And the aesthetic was probably my biggest concern when Greg and I were going through the early versions of this ordinance.
Thank you.
So those were, I think, the bulk of the comments that I was asking Greg to amend some things based purely on the aesthetic considerations.
Yeah, I took notice of how you phrased those. I thought they were very well covered quite well.
Mayor?
Yes.
Just a quick question. Would we put any regulation on easements and notifications and wearing of identification into this or another section of our ordinances?
If we're going to do that ordinance, it would, and Greg, correct me if you disagree with this, but I believe that that ordinance would cover the people working for this ordinance?
I'm wondering if it's the same section or a different one, and if we should do that before we approve, or if it's in a different section and it's okay to approve this because we're not going to modify it.
Well, the difference in this case is that before anyone does anything, they have to come talk to us and get our permission.
Got it.
So, we have leverage in this point, in this case, to guide this, where it should and how it should go. So, that would be...
These facilities are within, I'm sorry, these facilities are within the public right-of-way as well, so they're not going to be going into these backyards.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just, so for clarification, the applications will come to the full city commission that we will vote on for each application?
Yes.
And as far as definition of tower, as Commissioner Perry have referenced, is there anything in the ordinance, I was looking through it, as far as distinguishing between a pole or a tower? I mean, when I think of a lighting pole or, you know, something minimal that can be added to, that's quite different than, you know, a wide base structure that tops out at 35 feet, but at its base could be quite wide.
The ordinance never says tower, it always refers to it as pole. And the key provision here is that, and I'm quoting, "The maximum height of a pole or other supporting structure installed to accommodate a DAS small cell wireless network shall be 35 feet."
Okay.
So, the height of 35 feet alone, would you call 35-foot-tall something a tower? I mean, you might, but that height cap in the ordinance, I think, takes care of that.
I guess the worrisome part for me is when it says, "or other supporting structure." Am I reading...
Well, that's, it might not be on a pole. It might be mounted to a building. It might be mounted to something that already exists that's not a pole. So, the language has to be inclusive of that.
Okay.
If somebody comes to us and wants to build a 35-foot-tall lattice structure, it's like, you know, an oil derrick or something.
Right, yeah, that's what I was worried about.
I'm pretty sure we'll say, "Thanks, but don't thank for that."
All right.
And the ordinance does require a monopole design unless you approve something else, so that would kick into the...
Okay.
Something very wide at the bottom.
All right. Just a question as far as, have we had companies approaching us already?
Yes. That's the Genesis for bringing us.
How many have we had?
We had two.
Two? Okay, and they're waiting on approval of this?
At least one of them is.
Okay, I guess the only, yeah.
I, the first one that came in, I asked for a lot of supplemental information and we checked the other way.
Okay.
Somewhere easier, but...
Didn't work for the second one?
The second one, they are, they check in regularly on this.
Okay. So, yeah.
Are there any other questions? All right, so we are going to have a public hearing, solicitation of public comments on ordinance to amend Chapter 62, Street Sidewalks in Other Public Places, by the additional, by the addition, actually, of a new section, Section 62-29, DAS small cell wireless facilities in the public rights of way, and Ordinance 425 to amend Chapter 62, Street Sidewalks in Other Public Places by the addition of a new section, Section 62-29, DAS small cell wireless facilities in the public rights of way. I am opening the public hearing. Anybody who wants to comment? Don't all rush. Looking to see none? I'll close the public hearing and move to see if we will adopt the ordinance. Is there a motion to adopt?
Mayor, I move that Ordinance 425 amending Chapter 62, Street Sidewalks in Other Public Places by the additional, the addition of a new section, Section 62-29, and DAS small cell wireless facilities in the public rights of way be adopted.
Is there support?
Second?
Any discussion, further discussion?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. No, I would just emphasize that questions of safety, questions of aesthetics can all be determined on a case-by-case basis, and if there is an applicant that we feel infringes on either of those concerns, it is well within our rights to refuse the application. So our residents should be aware that if they have concerns, to pay attention to the agendas, if they, if they get light of a potential applicant wanting to do this in their part of town or in front of their house, that if they have concerns, that we need, we need definitely to hear about them. Because that is the assurance that I have going forward, is that if we run into an applicant and, you know, red flags are raised, not only, you know, we're obviously going to take that into consideration, but I think residents definitely need to know, if there's an applicant on record, will local affected houses, property owners be made aware of that application so they could forward their concerns to us?
We did add the 300-foot notification requirement, and again, that comes straight out of state law.
Okay.
Whenever there's a conditional or special use or zoning change, there are certain things that trigger that. So, this falls in. So if you, if your property is within 300 feet of the site, the resident will get notice.
Okay.
Of course, we'll do all the normal things that we do whenever we get a special use, you know, notification through other channels as well, to the broader community, but certainly those people within 300 feet will get mailed notice.
Okay, good.
May we take the vote, please?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisio?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Muster?
Yes. We have adopted, the ordinance is adopted. Thank you. Next item, Community Energy Management Plan adoption. Jim, back to you.
Yes, you may recall, we brought this to you in June to introduce the draft version of the plan, and then we had our community energy survey, which we did immediately following that together. Input from the community on the plan and more broadly, input from the community on how our residents are feeling about energy reduction, conservation, renewable energy, and what they would like to do at their own homes. The Community Energy Strategic Plan focuses on city facilities, because that's what we can directly control and influence. But the next step is, once we get our own facilities running more efficiently, then how do we help facilitate residents who want to do these kind of similar improvements? And actually, the item that we pulled off the consent agenda is one of those, one of those things. Out of that energy survey, which is included in the packet, the results of that, we found that broadly residents were supportive of the plan. We didn't get any comments, any substantive comments on anything that we really needed to change in the plan, so we continued working on it to refine it and put in the final detail. The headline number is that the plan commits the city to reduce energy usage by 25% by the year 2020. You may be familiar with such pledges, the national level or the state level, which come and go, I guess, but, you know, those are typically from a 1990 or 2000 or, you know, some baseline kind of farther back. We couldn't do that here because unlike at a national level, we're not measuring carbon generation from power plants or anything like that. We can only go on our own records, and we really only have good records of our energy use, good detailed, you know, high-quality records of our energy use going back to the end of 2014. So we use 2015 as our baseline year, and we committed to reduce our energy usage by 25% by the year 2020. We'll definitely get to that goal. And then once we do, we'll continue to iterate this, we'll see what more we can do at that point, because we're tackling all the low-hanging fruit now. The superintendent was talking about LED lighting. You know, we've done that at the community center, all of our streetlights are LED lights, all of the outdoor and indoor lights are LED lights at the community center. So, we're starting to knock off all those high-return projects. So once we do all that, we'll see what kind of reduction we've got, and then we'll, you know, plan round two. But of course, you know, it's kind of a snowball effect, as you start to save money, you have more money to invest into these projects, but the problem is the projects are costlier and have less of a payback than the original ones you did. So, you have to, you have to look at all of that together. The triple bottom line is key for us, you know, economically, environmentally, and I don't know what the other bottom line is right now, I forget, but those are the three key ones. Buzzwords. So that's all I have. The plan is in the, in your packets. If approved, we'll add it to the website under our planning documents, and we'll continue to go forth implementing it.
Anybody have questions? Jim? No? Okay. Then I'm going to ask for a motion to adopt the Community Energy Management Plan.
Mayor, I move that the city Pleasant Ridge Community Energy Plan, Energy Management Plan, sorry, be adopted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Just to say, I mean, I really liked the plan. I'm also quite interested in the comments and a lot of the, what people are looking at and how engaged the community is around energy, saving energy and, you know, our carbon footprint. So, there's a lot of good ideas, looks like a lot of people are interested in supporting city efforts, so very happy about that. Can you just take a vote, please?
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisio?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Next item, Police Pension Village Update. Jim, back to you.
Sure. What I want to update you on tonight is the process. You know that we have the Police Pension Village, which will be on the ballot in November, on November 7th. The purpose of the village is to fund our currently underfunded Police Pension Fund. It's 48% funded right now, and because MERS has woken up and is requiring communities to amortize their unfunded liabilities, our pension costs are going to go up by 200% versus the 2014 level by the mid 2020s. It'll be an increase of $225,000 or $250,000 over what we were paying in 2014, and that's the payroll for all of our patrol officers right now. So we've got a looming and growing problem, and we've been working on it, and we've been making cuts, and we've absorbed about $90,000 of increased pension costs since 2014, going to the point where we can't really cut our way out of this problem anymore without directly impacting the services we offer to residents. So some of, one of the things, all the energy projects we've been doing are probably saving us $35,000 or $40,000 a year. But of course, that's getting chewed up by pension costs, so running faster to stand still. I presented about this at numerous city commission meetings, I'm not going to do that again here tonight, because you'll see these going up in a few locations around town.
Enough said, right there.
Our first event is going to be a village information session and a meet-the-candidate event on Tuesday, September 26th, 2017. We'll serve at OmniBus Election Palooza that night.
Oh, boy.
Beginning with a village information session at 6:00, so all of our candidates can come. We can all have the same base of information about the problem and the proposed solution. And then immediately following that at 7:00 will be the meet-the-candidate event, where you can meet our extraordinarily qualified and deep pool of candidates we have for city commission this year. I don't believe the mayor will be there, because he's running unopposed, but he'll be there with us in spirit. We will also have another village information session, a second one, on Tuesday, October 17th, at 7:00 PM at the community center. So if you can't make it to the September 26th, we'll have another one for you to come out and hear the longer presentation on what's going on with the Police Pension Village. Later this week, a postcard will be mailed to all residents, providing the same information that I just told you. So, this will be going to every house in town, we'll have the signs up. They are posted today. We have fact sheets and information sheets and presentations. I was working on it at 6:00 to get them live on the website before the meeting tonight. So, those are all live on the website, right on the homepage, right before you get to the boxes of information and upcoming meeting agendas. If you've used the website, you'll be familiar with where they're at. We took down the notification about garbage day changing and replaced it with a village information sheet.
I think we got that, then.
So we've got lots of them there. If you're looking at them and you have limited time or limited interest, read the executive summary, and then if you really want to dive deep, there's lots more information in detail there for you. And a lot of the same information will be covered at the information sessions, so depending on what kind of learner you are, we've got you covered. I think that's it on the update for the village information session.
Candidates only at one, not at both?
Well, meet the candidates is a legal women voters event.
Oh, that? Okay, same night.
Right, so we're just, we're combining, so instead of, you know, having to come out on separate nights to hear about the village and meet the candidates, you can leave your house once.
Can I ask for more?
Get all the information, you can make your informed choices on the November ballot.
I'm still asking the mayor questions.
Ask me any questions you want. Go ahead.
You could facestand it.
Come on.
So, do you have any questions for me about the village process?
No, I did want to compliment you. I think I would recommend reading certainly the executive summary, but I find the charts and graphs. I mean, the information that you present in a very clear, concise way points out the issue that we're facing. And it's very clearly, I mean, you can't get around it. I mean, it's right there in black and white, and you've provided plenty of the background and how we got here and where, you know, what the forecast is. It's either the village or we got to cut drastically somewhere. And nobody wants to lose police, and nobody wants to lose the services that we get, so I think it's, I recommend that people do read the materials. I think they'll, they'll see why it is so important to, yes. Okay?
I would just mention, a number of years ago, remember, we had this survey where things were ranked in the city, and our police department was ranked, "It's very important to me, and I'm willing to pay more to support it."
That's right.
So this is the time where we'll see how that comes through, and I think it'll be just as we saw in the survey.
I do, too. I do, too. One resident, one longtime resident, came up to me and said, "Of course we vote for that, we've promised them." That was a promise we made. We owe it to them, so I think that's where people will...
And that's a key point. I'll say, I said I wasn't going to talk about what we talked about before, but that is a key point. This is, this millage is about living up to the promises we've made to the police who are retired, who are still here, who we hired in. We have made all of the changes necessary since 2011. The pension fund that's in trouble is for officers hired before 2011. The pension funds we've created for officers hired after 2011 are all fully funded, and there are, you know, no issues with those. We're going to be fine. It's just a matter of, you know, it's the boa constrictor that ate the pig, and we just have to pass that through the system, and then, once that happens...
Yeah, we're good.
No, it's, we'll be fine.
Very cramped. You're a visual worker.
There is, there is that picture on page 11 of his, one of his handouts, of a python, the boa constrictor eating the pig.
You know, and not everything's a home room.
All right.
Very metaphorical.
Any other? Okay. Now, we will go to 11A, which was the item Resolution Regarding Semrio Aggregate Solar Purchasing Initiative Participation. Jim, you want to?
Sure. This is actually one of the things that came out of the survey, was a recurring comment that, you know, if the city could somehow offer a way for residents to save money on installing solar panels through an aggregate, you know, aggregating a number of jobs so you might get better prices. And I think there was a comment that the group we were working with on the grant that funded the energy plan, there was a number of communities that these energy plans were done for. Ferndale, Dearborn, Wayne, us, and, uh, Mady and Arbor. But I think a comment that they heard, recurringly, was this idea of aggregating solar purchasing. So Semrio, who's the umbrella organization for the Street Lighting Coalition we were part of, for the Energy Management Grant, they partnered up with Michigan Solar Solutions and McNaughton McKay. Michigan Solar Solutions is an installer, and McNaughton McKay is a supplier, really the supplier, for a lot of electrical equipment, but specifically, a lot of the solar panels. So they teamed up with those two contractors to provide a turnkey solution for residents who are looking to go solar. Financing, installation, sourcing of the material, all of it. So this is the program that we, is proposed before you that we join. There's no commitment, there's no cost to the city, there's no financial benefit to the city from this either. It's merely a service that we would be offering. Our only commitment is to publicize it, make our residents aware that it exists. There's nothing that says that we're granting some kind of exclusive right for this company to do solar installations in Pleasant Ridge. Any resident can call anyone they want to, to install solar panels. We're just, this is a turnkey program that Semrio has put together. It'll be up to residents to, you know, do their due diligence if they want to take part in this, but, again, the concept, the law residents asked for, is what this is. So that's the background on what's proposed before you. I know that Commissioner Kuzia had a question today, I don't know if you want to...
Yeah, and I appreciate taking the time to explain that to our residents. The concern I had, and the question I had, was that setting this up, I think, will be a great benefit to our residents. It's a turnkey package that I think most residents, if they're interested, and I, we referenced the survey earlier, there was some conversation about how many residents in the community are really ready to take this step. I think as programs like this are brought to their attention, pricing continues to become more achievable for some residents, we're going to see more people interested in this. So the whole idea and the effort that Semrio has put into it is something that I support. What stopped me, and what prompted my questions, was that in the resolution, not only does it approve the setup of this program, but it commits Pleasant Ridge to promoting, I think they used the word endorsing even, this program, which I don't want to prejudice any residents against investigating this program. In fact, I would like to direct their attention to it. The concern that I had was when it calls out the contractors, specifically, the installers, Michigan Solar Solutions of Commerce Township. The question I had for Jim earlier today, and was something that I asked to be discussed at the meeting this evening, was that there are a lot of electricians throughout the state who are working on projects like this. And one thing that I have hoped for, from an employment perspective throughout the state, is that as we turn to some of these new energy projects, that these will provide stable, middle-class jobs for more and more people who live in the state of Michigan. A project like this, a commitment like this, is one of those projects. So I just had a concern about the labor standards that were going to be connected, and specifically, Michigan Solar Solutions as being the contractor who's called out here. And the mayor mentioned it earlier, and we had this discussion about contractors going into people's yards, and people working minimum wage, unskilled. I don't believe that is the future we should be promoting, as far as some of these new energy jobs. We should be promoting a future that, coincidentally, is providing a path and a secure middle, a middle-class lifestyle for people who are working on these projects. So that was my concern about Michigan Solar Solutions. I sent an email earlier today to Jim, and Jim did the legwork, as always, and got me an answer as far as this particular contractor will not be using union labor or IBW electricians, which I would have preferred they do, but Jim has assured me that they will be, that they do use prevailing wage guidelines as part of their employment structure. And by law, and anybody here can correct me, Mr. Neath specifically, but my understanding is that the way the prevailing wage is set in the law in the state of Michigan right now, is that it does work off a summary of collectively bargained agreements in the industry. So Jim provided me that information. That was my concern, and was something I did want to speak to, because I do feel is important going forward, that as we embrace these new technologies, that we also look on the opportunities that they provide as far as jobs and a standard of living for people in Pleasant Ridge, people throughout the state. So that was why I had asked that that be removed. I feel comfortable that our concerns were addressed, and if nobody else has any questions, I'll just make the motion. I'd like to make a motion that the Resolution Regarding Semrio Aggregate Solar Purchasing Initiative Participation be approved.
A second. Any discussion? Okay, any?
Commissioner Kuzia?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Karen Muth?
Yes. Thank you, Jason. Very good. Motion carries. Now, I don't know why, but we move to the City Manager's Report. I don't know why either. You got more?
Here we are.
All right.
I have a slideshow I'd like to go through, but it's a lot of good, maybe one disappointing thing. This is actually an example of what the small cellar, an installed example looks like, just to double back. You can see the little tiny blade on top, which is the antenna, and then this is the equipment that goes on the pole. So that's, that's something that's not great, but, you know, it's, it's something. That's the starting point for what we're dealing with.
That is the cable equipment.
Yeah, right. This is the roof of our community center, so we are now generating our own electricity. I think we've generated 1.4 megawatts of power since this went live on August 29th, so that's a cool thing. We're excited to get this done and going. Talking about rooftop solar, we just approved participation in the Semrio program. One of the things we need to look at is our regulatory environment, and you've heard me talk about this, I think, at some other meetings. The Planning Commission is looking at our solar power, or our solar panel regulations for residential houses. Right now, you can't have a solar energy system where it's visible from the street, that's our standard. In Pleasant Ridge, that's a tough standard, because our streets run east and west, so your south-facing facade is your energy-generating facade. So if you're going to be able to do a solar system, a solar energy system, Pluto orbiting your house, probably, if you're going to do a solar energy system, and you're on the north side of one of those east-west streets, you need to, you need to use this street-facing facade for your house. So our regulations right now preclude a little bit short of half of our residents from even considering using or installing solar energy. We're a heavily treed community, so that's a challenge. But then, our regulatory environment is also another one for those residents who live on the north side of an east-west street. So please, take our solar energy survey. We're soliciting comment from the community right now. We're going to be sending this out in an e-blast. We just posted it on Facebook, and we have about 55 responses so far to it. We're trying to get more about whether we should allow solar panels that are visible from the street. And if we do, should there be some kind of design restriction on those? You can get solar panels that are all black. On these, you can see where the grid on them is, that metallic-looking material, and the surface of the panels is actually black. You can get solar panels where the grid part is all black as well, so it gives it just a cleaner look. And even if your roof isn't black, it's a little bit less noticeable on the roof, and we can require that, certainly, for any panel that's street-facing. It doesn't add a lot of cost. The Planning Commission will be looking at the results of the survey at their October 24 meeting, and then figuring out how to go forward with this, whether or not we want to keep the standards we have in place, or to go with new standards. And I'll give you a hint, so far, it's about two-thirds are in favor of allowing these where they do visible from the street, and about one-third of our respondents so far say, "No, the aesthetic design considerations are more important than allowing solar panels." And that's a very valid point. I mean, we're a city that, the entire city is a historic district, so we need to hash through this question. One thing that we do see a lot of is Tesla's solar shingles are going to be the answer to all of this. And they may be, but if you look at the prices for that right now, Tesla goes through a lot of mathematical gymnastics to get to the point where they show that their roof has a payback. They add in the cost of replacing your roof into the cost of putting in the solar panels on your house. And I priced it out for my house, and the Tesla website told me it was going to be $52,000 to put this Tesla solar roof on my house, and that it would never pay back. But the cost of putting a conventional solar panel system on my house, that would be the same power generating as the Tesla system, well, a conventional solar system is about $3 a watt now for a residential install. So a five-megawatt, or five-kilowatt-hour system for a typical residential house is plenty, so that's about $15,000. So Tesla's solar roof is not going to change or save the world, or be our, you know, silver bullet that allows us to have pretty solar. It's got a ways to go. So the idea that we should wait for technologies to mature before we do anything, I don't know if we have time, quite frankly, for that, if we should, you know, stand away, or if we should allow what's good now, and then change that later when other technologies mature. That's certainly a valid way forward as well. So I'll get off my soapbox on that. Please, go take the survey. We'll add a link to this on the city website as well, and expect to see this in an e-blast Other updates, Lake Gainsborough, which was warming at the playground when we had heavy rain events, I think, has been, from what we can see, mitigated. The two-inch rainfall we had a few weeks ago that flooded basements in Berkeley created Lake Gainsborough again, but this time, we got rid of it within probably six hours, and it was gone.
Excellent.
One of the things we wanted to do at the park, coming out of 2014, in the basement event we had from the six inches of rain we got in August three years ago, we knew we have to start addressing rainwater better. We have a 100-year-old storm sewer system here, that was a combined sewer system that was put in the ground at a time when everything went in the ground, and it went really fast into a pipe, straight out into a river or a waterway somewhere. And we said, "Well, that's not a great idea." So then, the overflow facility, the Coon facility, was put in to treat the water and hold the water. The problem is, during the really big rain events that we get now, that weren't, that we didn't get in 1961, when the system was designed, and the rain event was a 10-year storm from 1961, and now we're getting 100- and 500-year storms every two or three years, we basically, our sewer system is like a bathtub that the drain is plugged, because the Coon facility only can take so much, and then it fills up, and then everything starts going back. So we're in a completely different kind of environment right now than when we were in the system was designed, so we have to change. We have to accommodate this. With the park, the idea was to take all the water from the park and put it back in the ground, and try to not put it into the sewer system, to start to reduce the amount of water we put into the sewer system, so that we don't get these events over time recurring. And, you know, one of the things that we found was that it wasn't functioning exactly as we had hoped. Two things, I think, helped with this. One is you grow grass, it holds more of the water in place, instead of it all running to the low point here. But then, we installed dry wells that just get the water into the ground faster, so that it can absorb in. And this is the area where those are. You can see here and here, if you go out there and look, there's two green grates that are there now. Those are the inlet points, and there's a drain tile system that we went around the corner that catches that water, puts it in the ground. So hopefully, we'll be getting rid of this a lot faster. The pond, we get out there, is to some extent a feature and not a bug, and it's just one of those things that, you know, I think we need to start to accept, and think about rainwater a little differently, and it'll hopefully be a very short-term thing now for us. The infiltration area at the end of Kensington, we also did the rain garden, and that dissipated much quicker as well.
That's great.
I think you'll see that at the end of Kensington, we don't get the big Lake Kensington by the drain inlets, to the extent we used to. So putting it in the ground is taking some of the pressure off the sewer system there. I think it's having noticeable effects. So we'll continue to monitor this, make sure it works the way it should. You may have noticed, at the end of Maywood, at Flynn Field, we were having a digging project. We uncovered something last year during the Gainsborough construction project, when a big piece of equipment drove over a steel plate that we had no idea was there, and smashed it, and we found that we had an issue, and we didn't know what it was, so we had them cover it back over with a steel plate, and said, "Okay." This spring, we had a lot of flooding in the Flynn, in Flynn Field. I mean, it was kind of deep there. We had a lot of rain for a very short period of time. So we got to thinking, we always heard, we had always heard that the old DPW, and this is going back before, when we had our own DPW in Pleasant Ridge, before really any of us who are here were here, working at the city, had put in a French drain system to drain that field. And so we said, "Oh, well, you know what? Maybe they crushed, or maybe this was the tie-in where it went to the sewer." So we dug it up to see what it was. Turns out, it's an old oil-water separator, or an old septic, that had been cut off. You can see the old inlet pipe where something flushed into this. So this is a remnant from before time. Wasn't related to the French drain system, at least now we know what it is. So that's what the big dirt pile is at Gainsborough Park. A little amateur archaeology. We didn't find anything interesting, unfortunately, but at least now we know. We still don't know why the field flooded at Flynn Field, but we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. The bad news, the giant 41-inch maple tree in Stevenson Park, that you don't really notice this when you're in Stevenson Park, but you notice it when you're on Sylvan, and you notice it when you're across the street on Woodward. You can see dead, 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 and you can see the color of the tree compared to, you know, everything else. It's got that kind of sickly yellow. Tree is, is gone. It's got hangers, we've been pulling hangers out of it, it's dropping a lot of branches, it's big. So I just wanted to give everyone ample heads up, and pre-notice that the tree is dead, that we're not tree-hating evil people in Pleasant Ridge, we're cutting it down. We have to cut it down. And in fact, we've known about this for a couple of years, and just have been watching it deteriorate, and we hung on for as long as we could. Part of the reason why there's five pretty new trees planted along Woodward to compensate for that over time. These are London plane trees, so those will be nice, big, substantial, interesting trees that will reforest that over time. But this is a heads up, that that will be coming in the next month or so. We've been going through and getting all of our tree work ready for this year, to do this fall, so... this fall, so you'll be seeing a lot of tree work happening. Amanda talked about this, the largely foundation-sponsored project, this is behind the community center, looks a little different now. All the play structure, the play structure is gone, the balance beam is gone, the plate, the swing set is gone, the sandbox is gone, so we are prepped and ready to go. Work will be starting this week on the patio project back there, and all, all signs indicate that the foundation will have a lovely patio to do their event on in October 18.
Yay!
And if not, then, hopefully, I don't know, I don't want to think about that.
We'll have something to do.
And the last thing is, this is just a shot of Hanover before, and then at the same spot after, so you can see what a difference a street makes.
That was a winner.
So, happy to say that we're approaching very glacially the end of this project, we've been at about 95% complete for a while, and trying to get contractors to get back out here to get their subs out. It's hard to find good subcontractors these days, I think, because that's been a struggle, I'll admit, on Hanover as well. There we are, the end.
Beautiful. Any questions or comments for Jim?
Sad to hear about the tree, I mean, and I wasn't going to mention it, but as I was walking in, and I want to like, hopefully there's something reassuring, but our Christmas tree looks a little affected.
That has looked a little, a little sickly for a few years too.
Yeah, I don't know if we have or we should kind of put that on some sort of watch or...
We're monitoring.
All right, because that would be, I mean, this will be, this will be devastating. If we were to lose that, I mean, obviously...
The good thing is we've got other large trees that can take its place close by. We've got contingency, Christmas contingency plans, holiday in place.
We'll hold your hands for a while.
No, that'd be tough.
The good thing is, is it's looked that way, but it hasn't really progressed, so we've kind of been in this, you know, sort of arrested decline for a while.
You can paint.
Okay.
Spray.
We can spray that in the upper end of this where we spray them.
Nothing else? All right, let's move to other business. Who wants to start? Go for it.
Okay, book club, Kathy Gillis was here earlier, she was so excited to give me this book, she gave it to me a year ago, and then the book club decided that they wanted to read it. I finally had the chance over the last month to read it, it's called The Boys in the Boat, it's an account of the 1936 Washington crew team, normally a subject I wouldn't have that much interest in, but I have to say, going through this book, it was fabulous, it takes an account of these young men and their journey to Berlin, the same Olympics that, you know, Jesse Owens made history, obviously with the rise of Hitler in Germany, it was a very important setup for the tragedy that was to befall the world in coming years, but fabulous book. We will be discussing it tomorrow at 7 o'clock at the community center, Wednesday, September 13th at 7:00 PM. And John Wright is here, read the book, brought it to our attention that there was a PBS documentary on these eight boys who brought home the gold medal in 1936. It's about an hour long, so we thought tomorrow that we'll incorporate the viewing of the Boys of '36 with the discussion of the Boys in the Boat, and it should be, it should be pretty rewarding. I know, you know, John, I think, enjoyed the book, and there'll be much to talk about tomorrow as far as that. The October book is The Little Paris Bookshop, a book of which I know nothing about, but I have two copies, actually I have more than two copies, but if anybody needs a copy, please contact me, I can get you a borrowed book for the month, and we'll be discussing that book Wednesday, October 11th, 7:00 PM at the Rec, at the Rec Center as well, so. And then, so that's the two book club events, and then I also wanted to mention, I know the city commission in March approved a resolution supporting an organization called Welcoming Cities, and as part of that resolution, we talked about different things that City of Pleasant Ridge could do in the spirit of inclusion and welcoming not only new residents, but just visitors and people to our city. So there's been some banter back and forth, we really haven't really set a direction on that yet, but there is a thought that next week, a week from tonight, Tuesday the 19th of September, at the Recreation Center at 7:00, we could have like a little informal roundtable-type discussion, open to all residents, and so we could talk about some of the issues surrounding inclusion in the state, in the state of Michigan and the city of Pleasant Ridge particularly, and things that we would like to do as a community over the coming year to signal our support for those ideals that we approved as part of the Welcoming Cities Coalition. So, I know I've talked to the neighbor, you know, the city commission is aware, we just want to extend an invitation to all residents that next Tuesday at 7:00, I think, we'll bring some desserts, maybe some cookies, maybe a pie or something.
Definitely cookies.
Yeah, and we'll just talk about the issues surrounding inclusion, and then what we can do to stage events, and, and also, the mayor's talked about just an opportunity to welcome new residents, if, if there's residents who are looking for ways to get involved in the city or to meet their neighbors, it would also be a good opportunity for that, so.
It's kind of the broader welcoming.
Right.
You can be welcomed to the foundation in, in October, but, yeah, it was...
It's a lot of welcoming.
Right. Next week is, next week is welcoming week nationally, and so we wanted to at least have some kind of event, and granted, we're still, you know, fumbling as, as Jason said, trying to figure out where we're going with this, but just to get, have a get-together and start talking about what we could do for the year coming, you know, events that we could hold for the coming year, kinds of activities that we might want to hold, so. Yeah, it's going to be very informal, but we hope we'll get something out quickly so that people at least have some notification, but we hope that people will just come. I mean, and it'll just be very, you know, come and meet your neighbors, come and talk about welcoming issues, and we'll see you next week.
And that's all I have, Mary.
I have one thing, just, just as a side, and it's, I'm sure that everybody is thrilled by their soccer bins, and everybody's recycling like mad. I know Jim had had some discussions with the city manager in Huntington Woods previously about maybe a contest. I was approached a couple days ago by a commissioner from Royal Oak, who was talking about communities that had just gotten bins. Huntington Woods has had their bins for a while, Royal Oak just got bins, Hazel Park just got bins, I think, Oak Park just got bins, and he was thinking about some kind of contest as well, get, get the, where we were previous to bin arrival, and at some point in the near future, start to do what kinds of percentage increase, try to have contests to see who's increasing, same thing that Huntington Woods was talking about.
That's interesting, because we were really high rate, I mean, we've won state awards for our recycling with the little bins. We don't have as much headroom as Royal Oak maybe does, so we got to be careful about how we set this up.
We will discuss, I appreciate that, we will discuss. I didn't say we're...
I want to set ourselves off fairly here.
No, no.
Huntington Woods is the 27 Yankees of recycling, and I mean, we're kind of close behind whoever's not the 27 Yankees but also a good baseball team, that's us.
Could be the Cleveland Indians.
That's right.
84 Tigers.
The 84 Tigers of recycling at this point, and so, yeah.
Well, he started talking about we have, the loser would wear a Royal Oak t-shirt and some other stuff, and I don't want to, I don't want to go there, so.
I still think, you know what, I still think, we gun for the best, we go for Huntington Woods.
Okay, all right.
Let's talk about that.
Well, now it's an even playing field, right? It's never been even before.
That's right.
That's right.
So we knock, so we knock up Huntington Woods and then we go in.
And then we drop the mic.
Right.
We talk the run anyway.
Manhattan, Pittsburgh.
Something, something to think about, all right. So just, so don't recycle until the contest starts. Hold it in your garage, wherever it is. Okay, any other issues?
Mr. Mayor, I have one.
Questions, comments?
Speaking of welcoming, this is along those lines, we did a new residents event, what, a year or so ago, and it was very well-received by all the groups that participated. Just wondering if that's something we can look at doing again, I know that needs more planning than something like this does, but maybe over the winter when things are not so busy, we could do something similar.
Would like to do that, yeah.
We should probably do it every, you know, whatever...
So we'd have all the tables for all the different groups and the commissions and, yeah, that would be wonderful. Yeah, we'd like to do that.
Cool, probably time.
It would've been nice to have had that as part of this, but...
Yeah.
Timing. All right, um, anything else? Anne? Yes, I'm sorry, I know, you're sitting there.
I wasn't going to...
Oh, patient.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Applications for absentee ballots are on the website, so if you'd like an absentee ballot, grab the application off the website or stop in at City Hall, give me a call, we'll get you the application, and the ballot should be here September 23rd, and it'll get mailed out. Close registration for the November election is October 10th, it's at 5:00. There's several different areas that you can register to vote, Secretary of State being one of them, my office being another one. So if you need to register, stop in, we'll get you registered. And we have new election equipment that was just delivered in the last two weeks, similar to the old equipment, it's still optical scan, we're still going to fill in the little, it's a square, not an oval. It's a little higher speed, I don't know, we had pretty good speed on the other one, Lex Jamming, they were doing some training, we'll be training the election inspectors probably next month on the equipment. So, what I'm planning on doing is having one set up at the Rec Center, you kind of see it, they're really compact, they're really small, so they will be in use for the November election.
Excellent.
Cool, cool. I mean, what happens to the equipment when it's not in use?
Stored. Yeah, we store it, we have a closet that we store all the election equipment for the election, and they're in locked cases, so we can get to it. You know, it's key, master, you know?
Perfect.
A little tiny Russian, so it's easy.
Thank you. Is there anything else? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor? All right. We are adjourned.